A good evening and welcome everyone to this regular meeting on Monday, May 3rd. And I will now call this meeting the order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed to Zoom, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're calling in via phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star eight to unmute yourself. These options are going to be open until I close public comment. And we are now going to move on to a couple ceremonial items. Okay. All right. This is one of my favorite all-time ceremonial items we have. It's high school 4.0 honors recognition. And tonight, the San Mateo City Council celebrates the exemplary achievements of the graduating class of 2021. Namely, our students who have managed to maintain a 4.0 grade point average throughout their entire high school career. And given what all that's happened these last, this last year, this feat is even more remarkable than in past years. I want to begin by thanking the faculty and staff members who have made this school year possible. The outstanding, well-rounded individuals these students have become are the result of your limitless compassion for and commitment to serving our young community members. We would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the challenge and of our, the challenges our educators have faced this past year. And we thank you for all that you've done. Okay, now back to our students. You have all exhibited great pride in your education and have demonstrated amazing personal character. You represent the creative, talented and innovative student body that we have at all of our amazing high schools here in San Mateo, although this year met you at a time that will challenge the way, the challenge, the way we live and the way you see the world. We know that our future is definitely in good hands. Our hope is that you will carry on the fantastic lives that you have ahead of you. And knowing that your community loves and supports you, the city of San Mateo is proud to be a part of your story. On behalf of the San Mateo City Council, congratulations. I'd now like to invite our council members to share any personal sentiments if they have any before I read the off the names. Or we can wait until after. That's well too. That was probably what was meant to happen, but all right. So let's, let me, let me, let me acknowledge these remarkable individuals from. I'm, I'm going to be, I, I thought I was going to be, was I going to be reading the names or, or is not? Are we just going to show the names?
We were just going to show the names.
Okay. Well, congratulations to you all. All right, council members, do you have anything you would like to add? Councilmember Papin.
Oh, I'd just like to say you're San Mateo's finest. We wish you Godspeed in your future endeavors and we're enormously proud of you.
Well said. Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all of your really hard work, students, to get to this point. Opportunities are there for people who inform themselves and make themselves ready to take advantage of them. And there are a lot of opportunities in this world. So, you know, go out there, be bold, be confident and do your best as I know you have already. Thank you very much.
Great advice. Councilmember Gothols.
We are very proud of you and you have much to look forward to. So many great experiences. San Mateo has done so much for you and you have done so much for them, but we expect you to come back and serve your community when you're all done getting your education as well. So we're very proud of you. Good luck.
Great. I'll chime in and acknowledge that so many of the, the folks on that list have, are already strong and contributing Samitanians that are leading us and our generation and your leadership, especially, especially during these times has really shown through. And, and I feel very privileged to be working with so many Gen Z kids and learning from you and, and being guided by your wisdom and your contribution. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you and congratulations to all of you graduates again. And we are going to move on to the next item, which is number two, San Mateo County Mental Health Month. And we have a proclamation. Then we have Chris Rasmussen, who's going to be saying a few words, but let me first read the, the proclamation. Whereas mental health and freedom from substance use issues are fundamental to the overall health and wellbeing of our community members in San Mateo County, regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion, or economic status. And whereas mental health and substance use conditions affected one in four adults in the United States in 2019. Estimates suggest that one in four adults with a mental health condition is not receiving the help one needs. And whereas mental health and substance use conditions are as treatable as other health conditions and people who have mental health and substance use issues can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas stigma prevents many from seeking services and support, education and contact with those sharing stories of hope and recovery are key to reducing this stigma. And whereas the 2021 May Mental Health Month focuses on the theme of hashtag hope for change. This past year has brought unanticipated changes, leaving us to face these challenges and transform. Hope for change reminds us to spread hope and rely on the hope that carried us through a year of change. Whereas the San Mateo County MHP Planning Committee and Partners have organized over 31 free virtual events that feature open mic, music, art, films, pets, and children's stories and speaker panels and more. Whereas the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Staff, Community Partners and Clients, consumers and family members dedicate themselves to promoting wellness, resilience, recovery, inclusion, and equity around the mental health and substance use conditions and issues. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of San Mateo hereby designates the month of May 2021 as Mental Health Month. Be it further resolved, the city of San Mateo calls upon the community members and, and partners to recommit to reducing stigma and promoting wellness around mental health and substance use issues in San Mateo County. Signed Eric Rodriguez, Mayor San Mateo. And we now have a special guest, Chris Rasmussen from the Mental Health Substance Abuse Recovery. He's a recovery commissioner. Take it away, Chris, if you're here.
I'm here.
Yes, we can. Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you. Good to see you all. Thanks for having me. On behalf of the Commission and the Mental Health Planning Committee, thank you for recognizing May 2021 as Mental Health Month. Stigma and lack of awareness of resources are some of the key barriers preventing people from getting help around mental health and substance use issues. Mental Health Month is the best time of the year to increase awareness and inspire action to reduce stigma against those facing mental health and substance use issues. As you said, this year's theme is San Mateo County Mental Health Month Planning Committee and Partners have actually, we've, we've gotten more. So we're up to almost 50 virtual events throughout May that will be targeted on a group of age ranges and topics. All events are free and they're open to the public, but space is limited. So please reserve your spot. To help support Mental Health Month, I urge everyone to talk openly about mental health issues. The importance of talking about mental health cannot be overstressed. Let's use Mental Health Month as a way to talk about mental health. Mention it at your next meeting, neighborhood meeting, club meeting, work meeting, and to your family and friends. And finally, visit one of our virtual events planned this month. Ultimately, during the month of May, I want to remind everyone that mental illnesses are real and recovery is possible. It is possible to find a balance between life's ups and downs and continue to hope for change with the challenges brought on by the pandemic. We have a website, smchhealth.org/mentalhealthmonth, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Chris, for everything you do. And it looks like we have a couple of council members who would also like to make a couple of comments. Deputy Mayor Bonilla, you want to like start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I want to thank you and all the other members of the County Mental Health Planning Committee for all of your dedicated work to this cause. I mean, I'm offering a very personal and heartfelt thank you because this is really one of the most important things to me. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Papin.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you, Rick. I, I love the hashtag hope for change. I think it really makes sense. And the other thing that I'm very excited about is that you have specifically targeted programs this month. We've, as you said, we've been through so much the last year and it affects people differently. I have a teenager. I, it affects her much differently than it affected her mother. But nonetheless, there are, we all are going through it and I love the fact that you've targeted it because we are going through it in different ways. So I, I, I'm really excited about what you all have put together for this month and I concur with Deputy Mayor Bonilla. The import of it cannot be understated, not by any stretch. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And Chris, one last comment that I wanted to thank you for is that you, you basically given every single person something that they can do to help and it's just talking about it and reducing the stigma and talking about it as a disease and not as some affliction that just happens to other people because it happens to so many of us. So thank you again for being here and hopefully have, we'll have you back next year when we celebrate this next year. Take care. All right. We're going to move to ceremonial item number three, National Police Week. And I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the San Mateo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of residents of our community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department. And that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the San Mateo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, Mayor Eric Rodriguez of the city of San Mateo, on behalf of this city council, do hereby call upon citizens of San Mateo and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021 as National Police Week. And, and I further call upon all citizens of the city of San Mateo to observe Saturday, May 15th, 2021 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Eric Rodriguez, Mayor San Mateo. All right, we have a special guest speaking on this topic and it's Acting Police Chief Dave Perzaro. Our chief is on vacation right now. Even the chief gets a vacation every once in a while.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, thank you for this opportunity to address you. On behalf of Chief Ed Barberini and all the members of the San Mateo Police Department, I would like to thank you for this heartfelt proclamation for National Police Week. We are grateful and honored to receive this recognition. We are also inspired and humbled by your continued support to our department and all of our personnel who are working hard every day to serve and protect our citizens during these unprecedented and challenging times. We take pride in our profession and the services we provide to the citizens of San Mateo and we remain steadfast in our commitment to protect with honor and serve with pride. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to close that item and close the ceremonial section and we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you please read the consent calendar for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. As amended, item number five, ordinance adoption, protected trees, ordinance and administrative guidelines approval. Item number six, City Council Guidelines and Boards and Commission Rules and Procedures Update as amended. Item number seven, Board and Commissions Confirm Reappointments, Appoint to the Personnel Board and Establish Annual Appointment Subcommittee. Item number eight, Community Development Block Grant 2021-22 Annual Action Plan Adoption. Item number nine, Classification Updates, Community Development Department. Item number 10, California State Library Services and Technology Act Budget Appropriation. Item number 11, Contracts with Contingency Component Update. Item number 12, Coyote Point and Poplar Pump Station's Design Services Amendment. And item number 13, Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021, Letter of Support.
Thank you. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, see none. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any consent calendar item? Now would be the time to raise your hand and this is for the consent calendar items only.
I have no attendees with hands raised.
Okay, and I believe Deputy Mayor Bonilla wanted to say a couple of things.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I wish to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Great. Great. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Councilmember Papin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prohibits council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to go on. It looks like we have a pretty light agenda today. We have one item. It's old business and that's the COVID-19 update. And presenting to us is going to be our city manager, Drew Corbett.
Okay, bear with me for a minute. The presentation's coming up. All right. Is everyone able to see that?
Uh, yes, we are.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and the City Council. Drew Corbett, City Manager, just have a brief COVID-19 update to share a few operational updates with you tonight. Starting with the police department. For parking enforcement, our downtown meter enforcement had been paused for about six weeks. It recently resumed on Saturday. This wasn't necessarily COVID-19 related. This was paused due to our transition to the new pay-by-plate meters downtown, which has been going on since March. All of our other parking violations are currently being enforced except for the two-hour parking. That's been paused since, basically since the beginning of the pandemic, trying to accommodate the fact that more people have been at home, either working or going to school. As things are opening up more, we do believe that there is an increased need to begin enforcement or at least planning for enforcing again soon. And so what our plan is, is to, to restart enforcement of the two-hour parking on June 15th. That corresponds with the governor's timeframe to reopen California. And that gives us about six weeks to put together and execute a broad outreach and communication plan. Moving on to the library, the libraries started reopened today at reduced capacity. The main branch is going to be, or excuse me, the main library is going to be open six days a week for about four hours a day. And the branches will be open two days each per week, different days for four hours a day or a total of eight hours per week per branch. We're going to continue to expand capacity as conditions improve. And we're preparing to return to a full or a near, near full regular service schedule by late June or early July. And as far as recreation goes, for our summer programs, we are still working to hire summer part-time staff and hoping that we're able to fill all of our positions. Our indoor and outdoor summer programs are set to begin on June 21st and registrations have been going very well so far. Speaking of reservations for our picnic reservations, which have also been highly popular over the last three weeks. We've been able to increase the number of attendees at the individual picnic sites from 30 to 50 as of Saturday. And our senior programs, we're going to pilot some indoor programs scheduled to begin the week of July 6th. And just as a reminder, we're, we're continuing the senior lunch program at the Senior Center and the King Center. So with that, I'm looking to confirmation of the continued need for
Drew, I think you froze.
It's, all right, well, it looks like he wants confirmation and a couple of things, I guess, while he's getting back online. But I don't think we're going to have any questions for Drew in this state. Do you want to log out Drew and log back in? Never a dull moment.
Just when I thought we'd end by 7:30.
Yeah. Well. All right, he jumped out.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is Rich. Drew, just let me know they have a power outage.
Great time. Okay, well.
Okay, yeah, so we lost, it seems like we lost everything. I mean, I, I don't have any questions as it relates to extending the emergency time.
Yep. I don't, okay. Any council member?
Gabrielle, I have a hunch that Drew is probably going to ask the council to make a motion that a majority felt that there was still a need for the emergency proclamation to remain in effect.
I think that's a pretty good hunch. Does, well, will someone like to make a motion?
Do you want to have a comment? Have a comment or no?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's probably a good thing to throw him completely off. All right, I'm going to open, I'm going to open up public comment now. We still have Patrice, right?
Doesn't look that way.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing any hands up, so I'm going to close public comment. And now I will entertain a motion.
A second.
I know you're going to first it. I'll move that we extend the time for the emergency declaration for 60 days.
Okay, and it's second by Deputy Mayor Bonilla and I, I will step in and call roll. Councilmember Papin.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Hi.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Through the mayor, I was able to, this is Kathy Climbam, Assistant City Manager. I was able to access Drew's PowerPoint and the second item that he was going to ask for council confirmation was whether you were comfortable with the resumption of the two-hour parking enforcement on June 15th.
Okay, do we have? Do we have any council member that's not comfortable with? All right, this is getting easy. Does anybody would like to make a motion on that? And Drew is texting me right now.
I'll move that we start enforcement of the two hours downtown parking.
Is it limited to downtown? I wasn't clear about that.
Let me see if I can find that on the PowerPoint. Or is anyone present from the police department who's not affected by the power outage? Let me be able to respond to that. Because I think it might be neighborhood related also.
That's what I thought. And if we're, if we're continuing the emergency order, we know that people are still working from home. Then wouldn't the conditions be the same?
I think the thought was that more people might be returning to work and that there be a concern about people that are returning to work spilling over and parking in the neighborhoods to avoid paying for parking garages, which is sort of the status quo situation, why a lot of the two-hour parking restrictions are in place.
Surrounding the downtown or commercial areas?
Yeah, I believe so. And, and all the residential permit parking districts, often it's because there's outside forces that are outside demand for parking in those neighborhoods. So if more people are coming back into the office, for example, more office workers in the downtown are present, then they may start spilling over to the neighborhoods again.
Okay. Are you, you done? Councilmember Lee? I have a question for Gabrielle because it does look like we lost tons of attendees. And I know that in our guidelines, we, we just enacted something that had to do with the power outage. Are we, are we able to keep going like we are? I guess Patrice is offline and Drew's offline. And
With the, the 60-day, with the extension of the need for the emergency, I think we've taken care of everything that needs to be taken care of this evening. And with regard to the parking issue, my recommendation would be to add it to the agenda for May 17th.
Okay, that sounds like good advice. So then I, I think that we've, we've completed this item unless there's any last comments. I thought I saw your hand go up. Deputy Mayor Bonilla? Or did we lose him? Okay. Okay, all right. So in that case, I'm going to close this item. And we're going to move on to reports and announcements. Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you. So I wanted to really just kind of shine a light on something that we did, that the mayor did this week. At the last meeting, we had some young people, I think three young people came to us, spoke under public comment regarding HR 2307, which is the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021, asking that we send a letter to our Congresswoman Jackie Speer. The council heard, the council acted, the mayor has prepared the letter and we approved it tonight. So I want to thank those young people for taking part in, in seeking to preserve their future. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Papin.
Just a quick announcement, there's a group Communities United and there will be a rally in various counties on May 15th and there will be one in this county. It will be in our very own Central Park, May 15th at 11 o'clock and I'll be sending you all information, but I just wanted to get the word out to the public. And what the organizers are hopeful to have is there'll be a contingency from every city in the county. And what the organizers are hopeful to have is there'll be a contingency from every city in the county. And sort of like, you know, when you go to the Olympics and there's a contingency from every country, there'll be a contingency from every city in the county coming together in our Central Park. It's Communities United Against Hate and Fear and it'll be May fifteenth at eleven o'clock in Central Park. And I'll make sure that you get the information as well. Spread the word. All are welcome.
Okay, council member Pappen, council member Gothos.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to adjourn in honor of two close family friends tonight?
Of course. Do we, I just want to make sure council member Lee doesn't have any last announcements and then we'll go right back to you. I am not seeing any. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead, council member.
Drew, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I I just got a text that we're going to continue the parking item to the seventeenth, so we'll come back with that. I don't, the power went out over here.
Last week, we lost two incredible San Mateo citizens who dedicated their lives to serving their community. Jim Harris, who worked for decades at San Mateo Lumber and who served San Mateo Schools and the San Mateo Community was just a titan of the community and I loved him dearly. And he passed away last week. And also Connie Truitt, Connie Truitt, an amazing San Mateo resident who served her community, who served her schools, who served her church. The two of them were a huge part of my childhood and I was inspired by their service to their community and and by their lives and by the children who they raised in San Mateo. Two lifelong residents who served San Mateo very well and they would be dearly missed. If we could just have one brief moment of silence, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Okay, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.